I got my pocket. In that closet, that's what he said. He tried to move the copper rod. We're all sitting in our mayor's chairs, so I'm guessing maybe.
It looks like it's a little too small. Yeah, like you give them three passes. Like, um, she's gonna face one of these five around.
You gotta like, tell me. They pull a lot of the different, the bend, all the, uh, sort of, sort of. Can we talk to her? Nice fish. Surtry. Yeah. Yeah, it'd be handsome fish. Hmm? I would say he has a good guy thinking.
I can bet it was. I'd like to call the February nineteenth, two thousand thirteen meeting. We'll stand for the implication.
Lord, we acknowledge your presence among us tonight. We know you're always with us. Good prayer for your guidance during this meeting. Give us the wisdom to work in the best interest of everyone in our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. My pleasure, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Did we have the roll call, the end?
Ferguson?
Here.
King? Schoninger? Callahan, here. Liefman?
Here.
Spackle? Brewer?
Here.
Lisha?
Uh, the mayor called tonight and he is sick. And he said he didn't want to spread it. And if the mayor says he's sick, I would really agree. If he were here, he was called. Okay, the first item on the agenda tonight is, uh, I have the letter here from, uh, it says, "I, Robert C. Beal, would like as a member of the city council from Deanna on the February eighth, two thousand eleven, for a term commenced in January first, two thousand twelve, to hereby resign from said office effective February fifth, two thousand thirteen." So the first thing on our, on our agenda tonight is to fill the seat of Mr. Beal, who resigned. If there's no objections in the past, we had Deanna go and write all the names of the people that have applied. Then, uh, we voted by paper ballot, then giving the ballots to Katie so they could be made public or to Deanna, whoever. Is there any objections to that?
Do you think we should have a whole council here?
We have a forum and we need a person. Right then. Who do you think, um?
I agree. My only comment would be that we just got these about fifteen minutes ago and there's four highly qualified residents here. And I have a thing to promote on this without speaking that any of them are talking to any of the references that they've listed. I think that would be wise to jump in someone's three-year seat and not even.
Uh, he will have to run in the fall because it's more than ninety days before the election. So it's a, it's like a six-month seat. Uh, I, I think if, uh, the rest of you, we should go forward. Why don't you do that?
Sure.
Dan, Dan, would you mind writing the, uh, names on the, uh, or do you have a copy?
I have a couple of letters.
There's a couple more added since.
Take this off so I don't drag it across the table.
It would be appropriate to be someone to move to put all four names of nomination.
There's, how many is there?
Just because they apply doesn't mean they're nominated, so.
I have four letters.
I have six. I have six. Uh, you can tell me again, Dan.
It would be appropriate for somebody, if you wouldn't, that you could do it two ways. You could either, each councilman could nominate someone or you could nominate them en masse. But they need to be nominated. The nomination needs to be seconded so that they're before you as nominees. So if you, if someone wants to vote, what, all six in nomination and seconded, you can proceed that way.
I would do that. I would make a motion that we nominate all six.
Second that. There's six of them?
Yeah.
And then I got four?
There's two came in today.
I think they were supposed to be in by yesterday. That's crazy.
Did they come in today?
I don't know.
Or did the mayor bring them tonight?
You can look at the date, Stephen, but a lot of other two. If they're past the date, it is too late.
Their letters are dated the twelfth and the sixteenth, but I don't know what date they were received. There's no receipt date still.
They were handed, delivered, there's none of them.
Can we know who they were? Are people here by chance that's in the room that maybe?
They probably are. Mr. Becker, when was yours?
Uh, day after the last council meeting or a few days.
Okay, you gave it to the mayor of now?
Yes, I did. I submitted it to him.
So it was you. And who was the other?
It's dated the twelfth, the other one was dated Perkins, which is sixteen on the line.
Oh, Monday. Monday? Okay, that was before the deadline also.
I wonder if they're voting and not even know what's going on.
Do you want to write them on the, uh, the, uh?
We had a motion, but that affected the second.
Ah, yes, second. If you have to vote on motion, we will.
It don't matter.
Bigger. Too small.
Not dark enough to read.
Well, it's heavy, so. Too small, too light.
Yeah. Uh, let's vote on the motions first.
Ferguson?
Yeah.
Schoninger? Challenger? Yes. Liefman?
No, I think this is crazy.
Okay, would you read the names off for them, uh, Dan? They're small, maybe they can't read them.
The names are Daniel Kevatz.
Can people hear her?
No.
The names are Daniel Kevatz.
Is that better?
David Perkins. Dan Becker. Richard McVain. Richard Hira. And Crystal submitted Box.
Okay, do you vote for them and Dan, if you want to pick them up? Now, if you record them and give them to Katie so she can read them.
One vote for McVain. 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 That's Dan.
Okay, that's three votes staying, uh, and then. Mr. McVain will be accepted as a position.
Yes, sir, will.
Could you step forward and make an administer the oath? Members of the House, you solemnly swear that you will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and the entire ordinances of the City of Columbia, that you will not be influenced by any consideration except that of merit and fitness in the appointment or discharge of employees, that you will not make or authorize the expenditure of public money otherwise under adequate consideration and efficient service to the municipal corporation, and that you will, in all other respects, faithfully discharge the duties of your office as council. If so, say I do.
I agree, Jim.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to resign from planning commission.
Uh, Mr. Ferguson, Mr. McVain just said likewise.
Well, I, I hold planning commission as, as a, uh, point of term of citizen. What Conville does is a.
Yeah, it's two different, uh.
They're two different positions. So I, I, I'm not allowed to serve on both planning commission and council.
Let's let that go a little later in the meeting then, because that will have to be changed. Just a thought, you can be thinking about these other people that have applied for council. Maybe one of them, uh, because they've shown an interest in council would accept the, uh, for now, the planning commission seat to talk, to think about. We'll move on with the meeting and then come back to that. Have no communications to read tonight. Do you have a copy of the planning commission meeting minutes of February fourth, two thousand thirteen? Are there any, uh, comments on the planning commission? Mr. McVain, you were there. Was there anything big happening?
No, we had, uh, a number of approvals we did and, uh, we are looking at a, uh, potential work to submit to council to try to put a timely, timely link. A food plan would be, may have food that is not inactive on the, uh, grid night. And I think that's on to, uh, Mr. Blasey, uh, to reconsider.
And we've, we've worked out the language on it.
Just so you know what that means, say, uh, Mr. Ferguson says I have rented the building uptown. Uh, I'm gonna put in a bookshop. Well, after six months, nothing's happening. In the past, that, that approval for the bookshop had just kept on going until something else happened. So at this point, they're working on something so the approval will after, after a year, it'd be void, it'd have to be redone. Okay, persons in the audience who'd like to speak tonight. Yes, sir, Mr. Finance Director.
I, I just wanted to point out, point of order, I guess. You missed item number six, approval of minutes.
I did?
Yes, sir, sorry.
Thank you for that. Uh, you have a copy of the minutes of the February fifth, two thousand thirteen meeting. Are there any additional suppressions to those minutes? If not, they will stand. Uh, we'll move on to the managers' report.
Yeah, you have a Columbia Fire Department report. And you also have a, um, notification from the Hot Division of Liquor Control regarding application for new liquor permit. City of Columbia, BG, VR, R Pizza. And also, um, Chief and I were looking for a motion to concur with the placement of Angelo, Angelo Pasquale, and James Marco on Columbia auxiliary police force.
Would you like to do that now?
Yes.
Chief, do you have anything to, uh, speak to this on?
Yeah, yes, sir, actually I do. It's, uh, I know you guys read, uh, every month my report. And I often mention the, uh, services rendered by the auxiliary unit of our police department. Frankly, none of these special events in town would go anywhere nearly as smoothly as they do now if we didn't have them. So the auxiliary plays a vitally important role in public safety, crowd control, and, and the orderly operation of all these public events that we do here in town. We have a lot of them here. So it's really important to note that, uh, having good people come forward to volunteer and give of their time without any pay at all and out of their own goodness of heart to serve the community is really refreshing today's society. Uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that the individual runs the auxiliary department and has for many years, uh, works under me as Officer Kevin Kloss. Kevin is here today with the two men. He's, uh, proposed for a membership in the unit. And I want to publicly thank him for his service. He's been here a long time and he really does a great job in the auxiliary. Without him, I don't know what I'd do on these special events. It'd be just overwhelming and, um, he's just greatly appreciated. So, um, with that, I just recommend both to the city manager and to you as council. And they're here tonight for you to meet and to be sworn should you approve the motion.
Kevin, would you bring your two-term one up and then address them quick? Mayor's gonna have to come up with it.
No, I was gonna say, did that go through? Mayor and Council, Angelo Pasquale, James Marco, your consideration.
Uh, would someone like to make a motion to accept these and these over?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Dan?
Schoninger?
Yes.
Challenger? Yes. Liefman?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
McVain?
Yes.
Mr. Solicitor, would you give the oath?
My pleasure. Gentlemen, raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and the laws of the State of Ohio, and the laws and ordinances of the City of Columbia, so long as you remain auxiliary controller. And you solemnly swear that you will carry out your duties to the best of your ability during that period of time. If so, say I do.
I do.
Glad to have you.
Keep your arms up for a minute, dear.
I think I'll indulge you.
Uh, gentlemen, you each should honor a law in five minutes for a speech.
You're a woman.
Yeah, I'll have them ready.
Thank you.
Continue on the managers' update. I finished contact with, uh, in your packet, there's a, a letter from WSRS and the Rural Community Assistance Program. And we've been talking, they, they're offering to perform a comprehensive rate study for water rates. And I talked to them today and they actually said that, um, they will, they'll look at several different structures for us and come back to us, you know, if we, if we decide to go forward with this. And they would also come in and talk to council before they're going to do it and see, see how the rates are going to be calculated and kind of a education process for all of us. And then at the end, they will provide a, a nice report. So in the back there, there's, uh, just some examples of, um, proposed scope of services. And they did, they did say in their, and she, she did talk about it today, Sharon Lee, that, that, uh, they could probably, they could try meeting our, our ninety-day timeframe that we were talking about. We wanted to do, you know, something rather quick. Usually it takes, uh, four months, but, um, I've been data lining the, um, the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve already to get some of the rates or the, the numbers ready. So, um, just wanted to run that by you.
It said in the letters that for addition, a couple thousand, there was like a price between five and eight thousand and said they could do it with two utilities. So is this the kind of thing that we can negotiate and have them come back with electric rates?
Yeah, I'm not sure that they work with electric, but I could definitely check.
That would definitely be an idea.
If we're gonna be, if, because it, the way it states, it says that you can do more than one utility, it'll go wrong. And my, my question about it is, is this the kind of thing where we're gonna say, this is how much the plant's gonna cost and they're gonna give us a report on, on a rate? Because if that's the case, we already have that with the.
It's, it's more of a comprehensive, uh, you know, she, she argues that it's more comprehensive than an engineering firm would do. They're gonna ask in a lot more data than normally we put in one of these rate studies. And plus, if, at the end of the project, if USDA will, they have paid for it in the past, you know, as part of the project, which is nice.
If we could get more than one utility, then I definitely wouldn't have a problem with it. Because I think, I was talking to someone in Salem the other day that also has a business here in Columbia, and he, he was just approaching all of the electric rates at five and a half cents plus the delivery charge.
Right.
But even still, I think we're, we're over ten, so I, I know we're, we're high on that side too. So it'd be nice to be able to see comparables and.
I like to, I like to move forward on it.
What do the rest of you think?
I think it's a big enough project that we need to have a second look at this.
Would you like to?
Like Brian said, if we can get two utilities done, uh, definitely. Even without that, I suspect we're ahead of the world.
Yeah, it's just their wording. I mean, they, they show that just a little bit more, they'll do more than one utility, so.
Yeah, and they're really nice to work with. They, they worked with us on that efficient pump and that's how we're doing on the GIS locations and several other projects. Or actually, they have reviewed some of our research projects.
I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Mary, do you have a problem? You like it?
Mm-hmm.
She likes it.
How about our new one?
How's our new number, Bob?
I think it's a good idea. It always makes sense to collect the vision of data and just think of what we're doing.
Okay, well, we just need to make a motion.
I got it. Maybe I'll think you need to. I just, I keep the hand touch.
Okay.
The next thing that's gonna happen, you're correct, is in case you would come in with Bob. Definitely, Al Colley tomorrow can schedule something in place.
Sounds good.
Uh, moving on to the water plant, uh, another well was serviced last week. Working on a, uh, a well that included two hundred foot of, uh, replacing pipe. And, uh, also they had a piece of equipment wrote down last week that, uh, both the water distribution and, uh, like, the water department worked very, very hard to get it back up and running. It's, uh, pretty piece of vintage equipment that they, uh, I know everybody works hard, but they really did a good job last week. Uh, wastewater, we, the wastewater plant assisted on a storm repair. And they're working on a few pumps at, uh, Creek Road in Windjammer. Uh, the street department, they, um, repaired a storm line and they helped the electric department run, uh, underground wire. Electric department, North Some Station's testing began yesterday. It's gonna go on for probably another week and a half and then we'll be ready to fire that up. Park and Cemetery, some progress has been made on the park shop. And here's a picture, updated, passing around. And they continue to work on, uh, the light displays. And, uh, for the police department, police chief's working on two, uh, grants right now. One is, um, the one that, um, Dallas Dawson sent in a few weeks ago, like, uh, a couple council meetings ago. They sent it, they directed to Brian.
Yeah.
That, uh, deadline is March first and we're gonna meet back, so.
Good.
And then what happens with that grant, and I have Chief to, uh, explain a little bit more, but, uh, even if, if we receive the grant, we don't necessarily have to take it. And we're gonna be meeting with them, uh, probably on Friday next week. And we'll, we'll make sure, like, police chief brought us to meet today, that that's not gonna hurt our chances of getting, you know, if we turn this one down. Do you have anything else to say about those, uh, grants or?
Uh, just that this one, that, uh, city manager's talking about, SNO Doc Grant, uh, it's a project that's been leading attention for a while, in my opinion. It's seven fourteen, uh, trying to create turn lanes and then take the traffic signals there. Uh, in the summertime, that's a extremely high traffic area. Traffic does back up, so it's a worthwhile project to pursue. Uh, we don't have numbers yet, obviously, that's what, uh, analysis folks are trying to come up with and, and that's what, once we have it, we'll share those and see if it's a feasible thing to do. It's an eighty-twenty grant, so there would be some match, so we'll discuss all that and see what all that looks like in terms of the finance. The other one is a, uh, justice assistance grant. It's, uh, thirty thousand dollars, uh, no match. Uh, they're very competitive, don't know, we'll, uh, stand a real big chance of getting it, but we're gonna stand in front of every funding screen we can find and try and do that. My intent for use of that is to replace an antiquated and very bulky computer network that we have, uh, here in our building. So if we can get that, we'll, uh, we'll be a long way forward having a, um, an updated computer network, including workstations and the whole thing that are, many of the, much of that stuff's over ten years old and it's just completely obsolete. We have even, uh, computers, uh, that won't accept our software upgrades anymore. There's some substitute that we're working on. Appreciate the city manager's support on that. You've given me a lot of help on it and we'll take a shot, see what happens.
I was at, uh, Valero at the intersection the other day. They were just asking, can you guys do something about the, the lights and, yeah, they sold out the Dunkin' Donuts in there and people pulling out.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's a nightmare. It's, it's probably more work with these intersections in terms of traffic, traffic frequency, so that was a natural choice.
I've had several citizens say they, I'm glad to hear it, we're gonna.
Chief, I'm a lot working above the lights. Uh, building and zoning, I had mentioned about that, uh, the grant for demolition of some, um, residents, houses in town and then, uh, vacated presidents. Anyway, Bob was unable to make, make it today, but he'll be here on March fifth to talk more about that program. Uh, EMS, we had a couple of them in service last week. And then, uh, I know this was brought up before, and this was before I was involved, but it, uh, you guys, let's see. We wanna know if you still want an exit audit on that for two thousand and ten eleven audit.
The exit conference on the two thousand and eleven audit. Last time we asked, the only one that go in one that was involved was Resell. Since Bob has resigned, we were just wondering if you're still interested in an exit conference.
Are there any findings that need to be?
There was no findings, there was just some recommendations that they provide.
You could provide them, too?
Oh, yeah, you'll get a copy of it, everything, we get it.
It's up to you.
I mean, you said they charged for that, correct?
Normally, yeah, they go charge.
If all they're gonna do is show up and read us a piece of paper that we can read anyway, I don't.
And it took them two years to do the audit?
Well, about a year. They started March of last year for two thousand and eleven and they just finished it off.
How about you, Tom, Richard? I guess not. I guess not.
And then lastly, Mahoning County, Tremble County, and Columbia County have been putting on a second harvest food bank for the last few years, I guess. And they invited the city up to a meeting last week, and I attended that, and brought a collection box back for that, and that started, so anybody that wants to donate cans of food, you can bring them to City Hall and drop that off, and all we have to do is call them when the box is filled. So we'll have that on the internet, too. That started on the 17th. And that's all I have. Chief, how's our fire truck coming along?
Moving along, we did pre-construction at the end of January. They just kind of let her over all the things that were changed in pre-construction, things that were not needed, and some things that were, they did all the changes at zero change in price, and I really think we made out well on that, to be honest with you. So now I'm waiting on the final print to come back and the updated spec, but they are working on the truck.
Mr. Electric Superintendent, I think you had something to say.
Oh, just the testing that's going on in North Sub, if anybody's interested, I want council to come out and take a look, you know, we'll be out there all day, stop in, if you get one break, whatever, it's stuff.
What would we see?
Bunch of expensive equipment, I know that, there's a lot of equipment in there. And it's just quite easier to show you versus trying to tell you about it.
What do they do, warming up the transformer now?
No, they're testing relays and the breakers and regulators.
Transformer hasn't been energized yet?
No, no, they got to do the testing on the transformer before they energize it.
Okay. What are you thinking this might be ready to go?
Well, hopefully by the end, well, middle of next week. It takes a long time. If you come out, you'll see what all they're doing.
Anyone else in the audience? Before we get into the building on the ordinances, to explain this planning commission thing, Mr. McBane was appointed from the public. Tom's on from as representative of council. I think he's just tired, maybe. What do you think of the idea of if they're here tonight, the other five that applied for the city council seat, if they'd be willing to fill that seat? Or would you rather open it up again to?
I see no, nothing wrong with it.
How about you?
I'm prepared.
I think they're interested citizens, somebody's back there.
Donna, what do you have?
I am part of the planning commission.
Yes.
And I believe the last time that someone was appointed, it was in the paper that there had been applications.
Okay.
That were not gone through or something, and it might be who you guys can maybe look at those, I don't know.
Okay, let's put it off. Katie, if you will, put it up, there's a vacancy in the public, and if any of you apply for city council, I hope you all have petitions for the fall election. So, you can maybe have that ready for the next meeting. Got some letters yet? When would the deadline be, where's their calendar? First Tuesday is the fifth. Let's do different, let's get them in by Friday so they can be in the packet. Let's have them in by the, let's have them in by the February 28th, so we can get them in their packet on Friday. February 28th, Katie. Okay, let's move on to.
Are we going to address this issue now or later?
Later. You mean the planning commission? Get put in there in the paper and go from there.
No, 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 my resignation.
Can't do it.
I can't?
No.
Sorry, you can't do it.
I think you'll find the charter says you have to serve to the end of your term.
I think that's what it says.
Are you wet? Or you go to jail?
Jake, can you handle it?
I don't know. Frank, when you ever read that part?
Well, we'll work it out. Believe that's what it says. We'll work it out next meeting. You're on to the next meeting, Anna.
We do need to vote on the application for the liquor permit. It was mentioned.
Whether we want a hearing or not?
Whether we want a hearing, it was not voted on, it was mentioned that there was.
Okay, the liquor hearing for Arsh Pizza, I think they already have a. Usually, we don't. Chief, has there been any trouble?
No, we don't have any objection. We've never had a call there at the time that I've been working here, other than you were too alarm drops and things like, I don't have any objection. Normally, what you guys do on these things are, if somebody makes a motion, have a hearing, it'll be seconded, then you all vote no if you don't, if you don't, then no hearing is requested. If you want a hearing at first, then you vote to have it.
I don't think we would have any valid reason to have a hearing.
I don't have any recommendation that we do.
So I'll make a motion that we have a hearing.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Challenger, now.
She's married first at both times.
Lightman?
No.
Ferguson?
No.
McBane?
No.
Schoniger?
No. I think normally, chief, the only way you have a hearing is if they already have a permit, and there's calls and stuff like that.
If they have a permit, or if it's a permit applicant, who we would have some substantive objection to due to prior police activity, or some other substantive objection. In this case, it's not.
Do you have a copy of the bill list as of 2/1913? You can tell it's a quantity of things. 2/1913, are there any questions on the bill list? If not, that will stand. Under Old and New Business, we have two resolutions. Due to their length, I have a motion to read them by title only. Dan?
Lightman?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Challenger? Yes.
Okay, resolution number 13-R-446, the second reading. Resolution employing Lance H. Willer, the city manager of the city of Columbia, as of the 30th day of January 2013. Do you have a motion on this?
I'll move.
Dan?
I just wanted to comment that, obviously, I wasn't involved in this election process for this. However, in anticipation that I might be chosen for the seat in council, I took it upon myself to talk with Lance and essentially interview him. And I see this as a decision on whether or not he is capable of doing the job, and I found a very good interview with him, and therefore I will vote yes.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Challenger? Yes. Lightman?
No.
Ferguson?
Yes.
And the vote is?
Four votes that passes.
Under New Business, we have one resolution that needs to be passed as an emergency. Can I have a motion to suspend and order two readings to do that?
So moved.
Discussion? Dan?
Schoniger?
Yes.
Challenger? Yes. Lightman?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
McBane?
Resolution number 13-R-447, an emergency resolution designating Huntington Bank as a public depository, and repealing resolution number 08-R-365, and repealing resolution number 13-R-444. Finance director, do you want to speak on any? Okay, let's get a motion first.
I'll make one.
Okay, now for discussion, finance director.
This is just the one that we did last meeting, but we had taken Lance's name off and just had city manager on there because he had not officially been selected as city manager. So we repealed that one, and we added Lance's name, and my name is also on there. And the other one that we're repealing from '08 was just the same thing, except it had Katie Chamberlain and Kevin Smith's name on there. And I talked with the auditors, and they said it would just, it'd probably be a good idea to just repeal that resolution and do a new one. So this is really all this is.
Okay, any thoughts on that?
Challenger? Yes. Lightman?
Yes.
Now, Ferguson?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Schoniger?
Under council comments, I'd like to have one and go first, and anybody else can have one. I don't know that it was in the paper, but the unanimous action against Keith and Dan to, about the bulging city income tax information has been ruled upon, and I guess basically it ended up that they, Keith and the audit director were in their rights, because they found no evidence to rule otherwise. So is there any other council comments?
Yeah, I'd like to say a couple things. First, to welcome Dick over here, and congratulate Lance, and encourage those citizens whose names are up there, to get your name in for the planning commission. It's a great place to learn the business of the city, so, who beat your names in. And last of all, I'd like to thank Dan for helping the wall tonight to get through.
She did. A little rusty, pump. In more ways than one. Anyone else?
I also just want to welcome you, too.
Anybody else want to say anything?
Yeah, I'd like to say, I have, I look forward to serving with you, Dick. I do not think that the public will serve tonight in the form of none of us getting a remote opportunity to look at anyone. And I think that if the public watches that, and see what I've been saying for the last month about what transpired elsewhere, it will draw the same conclusion. And it's not to say that you're not the best guy, but we didn't even look to see who applied. And I think people in the city need to be aware of that.
Yes, sir.
Well, I hate to reiterate that, but congratulations, I think you did make a wise choice. But I think the process wasn't there. I think an intelligent decision is one made after gaining all the facts. And I think a number of excellent people applied and did not have the opportunity to be interviewed and kind of state their case. And so, I hate to agree with you at times, but I do. And I think that the one criticism maybe sometimes at Columbia is it's run on an old boys' network, and I don't think tonight did anything to negate that. So, I would have liked to see these guys have an opportunity to be interviewed.
Yeah, I think, I think we have a lot of candidates up here, so I want to push my opinion, and why I voted the way I did. Dick McMinn did run for city council, to get your interest in the position. The citizens voted Bob Bischoff in the year by 20 votes?
16.
16 votes.
20?
20 votes. So I think that the public had spoken, I think Dick had displayed that he wanted this position back during the election period. I know several of the gentlemen out here, and I'm not saying they're not good people, I would love to see the people that were interested in this position to also apply for the, again, as I said earlier, for the planning commission. It's a great place to learn what the city is all about, how it operates. So I think the choice was not only made by members on his council tonight, but I think the choice of Dick McBane was also made by the citizens back in November. So based on that, I think that carried a lot of weight with Nate.
Anyone else? Most of you do it here.
What's that? I told you, I'm tired. I'm tired. You want to be retired, you want to get that. You're retired now, so just move along. That's good. What do you know?
And another guy. Another businessman. Two businessmen.
Well, Tom lives in Mahoney County.
I went in there and then I talked to him, you know, 'cause I know you told me about him. And I actually got my very, I mean, have some issues too.
They took, they took-
I think my granddaughter got in there.
It is.